Good evening and welcome to the October 2022 Town of Poughkeepsie zoning Board of Appeals. If we would all please rise for the pleasure of these. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
I would like the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to take the roll. Tony S. is not here. Tony G.?
Here.
Art?
Yes.
Larry?
Here.
Christine? Phyllis?
Here.
Simona?
Here.
And I'm here. So I think that you will be a voting member on everything. There will be a number of recusals, as I understand, but there's still a quorum and we'll still have a majority or a supermajority if that's necessary. For those of you unfamiliar with proceedings at the zoning Board of Appeals, there's an agenda that lists each application. We'll take those applications in the order of the agenda. The applicant will have an opportunity to describe what they want. All testimony is sworn in front of the CVA. The audience will have, or the public will have an opportunity to comment on any of the applications, either in person, through Zoom, or by the phone. At the end of that application, if the record's complete, we'll close the record and move on to the next application. At the end of all of those, there'll be a period of deliberation. We may take a break and then come back and deliberate. There's no further testimony or evidence offered during the period of deliberation. And you can either wait till the end of the meeting, which I expect will be a little later tonight, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning. And I noticed that Tony S. has joined us, and so we're prepared to go ahead. This brings us to the first item on the agenda, which there's a request to adjourn that until the November 14th, at 74 Spring Road. Is there a motion to adjourn to November 14th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? And Christine, your second is that? And all those in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number two, Bruce and Heather May, 11 Shelley Road. Is there someone here for them?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. and Mrs. May, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. Why don't you describe your application?
I'm requesting a variance for a privacy fence in my backyard. Up until recently, I found out that you live on the corner lot, which I guess it's two front yards. The town looks at it as two front yards instead of having a backyard, so. Just requesting a variance to keep the fence where it is.
Okay. And how long has the fence been there?
A couple of years.
Okay. And based upon our field visit, it appears it's behind a row of trees?
Yes.
Okay. And why is the fence there? Why do you need the fence?
To provide privacy, also to keep my kids, who have very fast legs, from running out the road. And also my dog as well, to keep everybody inside safe.
Okay. Any questions, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
I have no questions.
All right. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Why don't you come on up, have a seat? State your name and then give your sworn in.
You gotta, you gotta sit down and actually talk into the mic. Yeah, thanks.
When I swear in, I usually stand.
Yeah, you don't have to. It's all right.
What's your name?
My name is Rob Rubin, Robert Rubin, and I reside at One Drum Court in the town of Poughkeepsie.
Mr. Rubin, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. What would you like to say?
Well, I live at One Drum Court, and I believe that. Well, first off, my question is, I think that this changes the whole complexion of the neighborhood. I'm not in favor of this. The neighborhood is a completely open area, as far as I know, as far as I can see. Mine is also a corner property. And I have nothing to hide. The town comes by. I am very happy that the town patrols, the officers come by, they see things, they don't see things, whatever. And I think that it is incumbent upon the adults in a unit, as was mentioned earlier, about kids running and dogs running. It's incumbent upon adults in a unit to be responsible for their. I'm one of the original people in that development. As a matter of fact, I'm the original owner of the house. And I like the openness that the house, that the area does, even though it's only, say, a quarter or a third of an acre each. I'm in favor of just keeping this open. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for?
Oh, can you see? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can you see 11 Shelley Road from your home?
Absolutely. We're diagonally across the street.
And you were at One Drum?
One Drum Court, which is a corner house on Shelley and Drum.
Thank you. I'm trying to envision it. We were there, so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And then back to Mr. May. Do you have any comment about that?
Yes, I do. I can understand how you want everything to be open. It doesn't make sense. It makes for a prettier environment, I suppose. He cannot see our fence from his house. He's, if I were standing on my front stoop, he would be to the right. My fence goes around our side.
And he's across the street.
Yeah, and he's across the street. Yeah, he's basically across the street to the righthand side, so he cannot see our fence. I built this fence for a couple of reasons. We have a lot of children in our neighborhood. Most of the times when we're home or not home, we have a bunch of children playing in our playground back there. You know, I don't want to cause, we have a trampoline, you know, we have a patio on the back, we have a bunch of swing sets, you know, I have a three-year-old and a seven-year-old at home, so we do that as well just to keep everybody safe. It is not obstruction by any stretch of the imagination. That's why I set the gate back, the fence back sixteen and a half feet from the road. It doesn't obstruct any trees and neighbors or any of the like, so. So to kind of say that it's obstruction and he wants everything open, you know, it's just my backyard, so.
And my neighbors.
Yeah. That's just my viewpoint. Thanks. That's all.
Okay. Who installed the fence?
I did it.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
I've got one.
Yeah.
I've got one. I've got one question for you. Did you say you had neighborhood children stopping in when you're not home to use your playground?
Yes.
So that was creating a safety hazard in your opinion?
I mean, it hasn't. I'm afraid that it would, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public who wishes to comment on this? I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone on Zoom?
If you're on a cell phone on Zoom, you can use star three. No, I'm sorry. I'm wrong. Star six. Had to check my notes. Star six to unmute yourself if you're on a cell phone. Not seeing anybody.
Okay. Anyone else who wants to comment on 11 Shelley Road? All right. Seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. And again, you can either wait till the end of the meeting or find out, call out the zoning administrator in the morning. That brings us to item number three, Anthony Legori, 35 Crestwood Boulevard. Is there someone here from that? Come on up and have a seat.
How you doing?
Just state your name.
Anthony Legori.
Okay.
Mr. Legori, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right. Why don't you describe your application?
I'm applying for a five-foot variance of my driveway. I have an existing driveway approximately 11 feet wide that extends from the street to the house. Currently, we have two vehicles, but with children at driving age now, we're going to have two additional more in the short period of time and another, and a third to follow. So we'll have four cars, potentially five. And I'll need the additional space to have the cars on there. I'd rather not park them on the grass. We spoke with one of the paving companies for doing the work. So what we're doing is currently repaving the existing driveway and looking to extend or widen what we have. They recommended that the width of the driveway be approximately 10 foot per car width. So they recommended a 20-foot wide overall width for the driveway itself.
Okay. And there's a catch basin right at the end of?
Yes. So I originally went to the highway department to discuss or bring that up. I was going to have to apply for a permit, but the highway department does not want me to extend the widened section of the driveway to the catch basin. So they want me to start behind it and then continue forward.
So there'll be a section of lawn that you're going to drive over?
There'll be a small section of lawn there.
Okay. And the drawing that you illustrate doesn't go any past, any farther past the front of the garage? Is that correct?
Correct. Sorry, I'm sorry. Approximately, just there's a side door right on the edge of the garage there, which goes right to the edge of that. I don't know if I had marked it on the drawing there.
All right. Yeah, it shows a little bit extended. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Simona? Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
Is there a part of your front lawn that's already paved over with parking spot?
There's a small section in the front left corner that I share with my neighbor, but it's a little tight. It's a little bit of a wedge. It's not a full rectangular area over there. We've been kind of sharing that spot back and forth.
Tony?
No question.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right. I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone on Zoom or who wants to call in?
Again, because there are three cell phones on there, I just want to let you know it's star six to unmute if you're on a cell phone.
Okay. Seeing nothing, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number four, William Kistner, 42 Kensington Lane. I need to recuse myself on that, and then I believe Simona will be a voting member. Christine, do you mind taking over?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah.
This is for William Kistner and Samantha Cipriano, 42 Kensington Lane, requesting a five-foot area variance for the construction of an in-ground pool to be located 10 feet from the property line. Okay. So will you tell us about your application?
Yes. We just own in a new construction development. There is a deed restriction, which requires us to put in an in-ground pool. So an in-ground is not an option for us. It's not a substantial lot, and with the home placement, we were limited on choices for where to put the pool. We felt that the safest place to put it and the place that made the most sense is to the rear of the home. In order to locate it with the existing structure, we would require a five-foot variance, so that the setback would be 10 feet from the property room. We talked with our neighbors, you know, we investigated the rest of the area. Our neighbors didn't object. And the company that we were working with really felt that was the most feasible location, and we agreed, so we are applying for the variance.
Okay. And looking at the front of the house, the pool would be in the backyard on the left side. Is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, that's all. Art, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Simona?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
And Tony?
No questions.
Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom who would like to address this application? Okay, well, if there are any further questions, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Abstentions?
One recusal.
One recusal. Thank you.
That brings us to item number five. Christina and Angel Romero, 736 Duchess Turnpike. Hi, how are you?
Good. I'm Christina. This is Angel. Okay, Christina. You may remember us from a couple of months ago.
Christina and Angel, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
I do. Okay. Why don't you describe what's changed?
Okay, so if you recall, we are doing an addition on our house, so we're extending the side of our home. And we miscalculated because part of what we want to do in the basement part is make a garage. And the addition that we already applied for a variance for was not really allowing us a wide enough area to park a car comfortably in a garage. It would have really only given us about nine feet inside. So we're asking for additional rooms so that we can make it a little bit larger and be able to comfortably fit a car in there.
Okay. And based upon the drawing in our field trip, is it coming out any farther than the existing structure of the house?
Not. It's coming out farther than the house itself, but not farther than the retaining wall.
Okay.
Which I put a picture. I don't know if anybody wants to see it. It's a really bad picture. Our house is going to look beautiful after all.
Yes, yes, that one.
So you can see where we were going to come out just to where the house comes out, and now we're going to go out to where the retaining wall from our deck.
Okay, but no further encouragement than that?
No, no further than that.
And that still gives us like 12 feet from the setback, from the property line.
Okay. Any questions, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No, but thank you for coming back and asking for the additional space.
We didn't want to have a regret after doing it. We actually already applied for a building permit and everything. We were on our road. We, you know, we were ready, and we said, we're going to spend all this money and invest and not have a parkable garage. It doesn't make sense. So thank you for seeing us again.
Tony? Larry? Did I ask you that?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone on Zoom? I don't see any response, and so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Okay?
Thank you very much.
That brings us to item number six. Mark Meyerson, 10 Namado Drive.
Hi.
Mr. Meyerson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right. Why don't you describe this application?
Okay, so I'm looking for a variance of five feet to build a shed in the back corner of my rear yard. I'd like to have it five feet instead of the required 10, just so that it's closer to the property line and not sticking out into the yard as much to allow for more open space in the middle of the backyard. This building's not going to be any near, it won't be near any other houses or buildings, really. There's nothing close by right in that area, as you can see on the map. And this building's going to be replacing two existing smaller sheds that are kind of falling apart. I'm going to take those ones down, put grass there, and then put this shed in the other place.
I couldn't really see into your backyard, but where are the existing sheds now?
They're on the left-hand side, if you're looking at the house.
Okay. So there's a patio?
Yes.
And then?
They're just back further into the left, the existing ones.
There's a garden?
Yes. They're opposite of that, the other side.
And what's the height of this building?
It's one and a half stories.
So do you know the actual height?
I do not have it with me. I have it in the car, I believe. Actually, let me see. Yes, the actual height is 19 feet.
And how, how tall is the fence that goes around your property? Is that an eight-foot fence?
I believe so, yes. I believe it's eight foot in the, if you notice, it's two different types of fence. The front section's eight foot. In the back there, I believe it's probably only five foot, maybe four and a half, five feet.
Is there a reason that you need a one and a half story shed?
So the plan is to keep all of the lawn equipment and bikes and all that stuff in the lower level. And then on the second level, we want to use as storage because we have no attic or basement in our house.
And is it built on site?
Yes, it will be built on site.
That's all I have. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
So there's not going to be any living quarters of any type?
No.
It's just going to be storage?
It's just storage, correct.
Storage, yes. And does your height include the cupola or is it just the peak of the roof?
I don't believe it does. The picture I have here just shows 19 feet to the peak of the roof.
So it looks like there's another four feet?
That would probably be about correct, yes.
And I don't remember the property, the surrounding property. You didn't have anything in the line of neighbors close by, right?
No, the, the neighbor's house next to me is right, you know, in line with my house, so it's close to the street, not back there. And then there's a row of houses on Violet Avenue that my yard backs up to their backyard.
It looks like there's a shed in your neighbor's on the left. They've got something in their shed, is it?
Yes, both neighbors, the ones on the left and the right, both have sheds. The one on the left is next to my fence line there. I mean, 10 feet, I think, but it's.
Okay, thank you.
I have no questions.
Phyllis?
Can you talk a little bit, please, about how you decided to put the shed where you want to put it? Because it is kind of close to the fence and the property line.
Right. So we felt that it would be better to have it closer to the fence there so that it wasn't just out in the middle of the backyard, so that it just looked better, looked nicer there, and it wouldn't be taking up as much space in the middle section of the yard. And it'll also be kind of nice because the neighbors behind us are very loud, and it'd be nice to kind of have this building there to kind of block out the sound coming from their house.
Okay. Was there ever any consideration to having it placed towards the back fence? Like, right now, it's on the fence on the side.
Yes.
So there was never a consideration to put it to the back?
It's kind of like a hill there. It goes up, like, towards the houses on 9G, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So the property slopes up?
It slopes up there, yeah. So this is like the first flat area.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony? Tony?
Yeah, no questions.
All right. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right. I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone on Zoom?
It's a reminder, star six, if you're on a phone, to unmute yourself.
I see no response, and therefore I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item seven. Brian and Ella Plain, 130 132 Van Wagner Road. And again, I have to recuse myself on this one.
Hi, I'm Ella Plain.
Brian Plain.
This is my, it's on Brian.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Tell us about your application, please.
Okay. So I would like to put a deck on the front of my house, and I would like it to be the width of my house. I first put in a building permit to request for a 16-foot deck, but then I decided it would look better if we did it to the whole complete front of the house. So it turned out to be 23.9 feet. And I need a variance of eight feet because the variance that says that I need 20 feet from the property line and the property line to the, if you're facing the house, to the left of the house is 11.73. So I need a variance to be, it has to be 20 feet, so I need, I think it's eight feet. I know in the letter they sent that it was 13, but it's really not. It's, the setback would be 11.73.
And the deck is not going to extend any farther from the edge of the house on both sides?
No, no, it goes right from one corner of the house to the other corner of the house in the front.
To that side of the house, where she's asking for the variance, that's not developable land. There's nothing down there. There's nothing that can be built there either.
Okay, that's, that's all I have. Art, do you have any questions?
No.
You asked a question.
Simona?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No question.
Tony?
No question.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this application or anybody on Zoom? Well, there are no other questions. I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals?
One recusal.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item number eight, 35 Page Park. Is there someone here?
Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself.
And that will make Simona a voting member?
You know, you just have to connect to the Zoom, right? You're not connecting to the, directly to the?
I haven't been here in a long time.
Okay, do not, yeah, don't connect directly to the cable. You have to log into the Zoom.
Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah? Do you have the Zoom information for the meeting?
Yeah, so, yeah. So it's as if I'm not here?
What's that?
It's as if I'm not here.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
You shave your screen and, yep, no problem.
So will you state your name?
Kelly Leibert.
Hi, Kelly. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right. Why don't you describe this application?
Sorry. I'm Kelly Leibert with KRC Planning, representing Storage Depot. I think everyone here probably knows where this is, on Route 55. There's an existing self-storage facility, temperature-controlled, and this project location is in the back of that temperature-controlled self-storage facility, so it's in addition to the existing facility. This is the more conventional storage units that we see. We used to see just the one-story sort of garage-type storage units. And as you can see on this plan, the project area is, if I do this, is in the back of the property, so this is an industrial park. And as you can see on this plan, um, the project uh, area is, if I do this, is in the back of the property, so this is a industrial park um, in the back of the property. It's about five point three eight acres, and this is in the IH zoning district. And this just gives you an idea of the area. Um, this property actually contains two uses, so there's the vacant lot, that's used mostly um, by motorcycle training, you'll probably see people there quite often. And there's the cell tower, um, that's located in the back. So the applicant is proposing to install three uh, self-storage facilities, three buildings. Um, unfortunately, at some point in time, um, prior to today, the Duchess County um, rail trail was constructed on this property. And so, that's this area over here on the side. And what occurred is Duchess County Water and Waste Water installed a um, treatment facility on-site. And the pump location was located in a different area, and so the rail trail was actually installed on this property. There were easements that were granted later. Um, so, we're asking for these variances, because we're shifting these buildings off to the side. Um, the side yard setback is fifty feet, and so the buildings are thirty-two and change, and thirty-five feet from the property line, so we're requesting two side yard area variances um, on this side of the property. Again, this is inside of a heavily um, used industrial park. Um, we did provide you with um, our responses to the five-part threshold test um, for your application, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do you have um, an illustration of what it looks like from the rail trail?
I do not, um, we're actually before the planning board, seeking site plan approval, so they're waiting for um, this board to take action, so that they can advance. But we have proposed a whole series of um, evergreen trees on that side of the rail trail, and the county has, um, County DPW has reviewed the application, and has uh, provided no comment, no additional comment on the application.
Okay, uh, then I have any questions, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
I do, I do have a question. The portion that puts the closest to the rail trail?
Yes.
If they just knocked off those two-end sections, wouldn't they meet their criteria? They'd not need a variance?
They would have to reduce the size of the buildings, that's correct.
The variance is, just for, so everyone's clear, the variance is for the other side of the building.
Which side?
The, are they?
It's the side away from the rail trail.
Right, because the rail trail, there's actually easements there, so you take your variance from, to the property line, so we're looking, the variances that the applicant's looking for are on the right side, which have nothing to do with the rail trail. So you're not being asked to allow buildings to go any closer to the rail trail than would otherwise be allowed, you're being asked for the other side.
I'm good then, thank you.
Simone?
No questions.
Phyllis? Oh, I'm sorry. Larry?
No questions.
Tony? Tony?
And no questions.
Alright, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I see none, nothing in the audience, do you mind unsharing your screen, so we can see if there's anyone on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom, wave frantically. Unmute yourself if you're on a phone by hitting star six.
Alright, I, I don't see any indication that anyone wants to comment on this, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And again, you can wait till the end, or just call them away.
Thank you. I'm gonna stay, because I have the next application.
Here the next applicant, too.
Oh, right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So you said then, item number nine, two forty-one North Road?
Thank you.
Okay, why don't you describe yourself?
Thank you, Kelly Leibert with KRC Planning, representing the applicant.
And you're still sworn, so...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a request for um, two area variances for wall signs to be placed on the existing Westchester Medical Hospital facility. I think everyone knows where the hospital is, it's a pretty large campus, it's twenty-four acres, um, we're in the IN industrial zoning, or IN institutional district. Um, this is a elevation, or just a, a plan view showing the orientation of the hospital and the two signs that we're requesting, so the first sign is um, facing west, so facing Route nine. The second sign is on the north side of the hospital, and this is predominantly to address um, people who are coming from the eastern side of Duchess County, predominantly from nine G and uh, West Cedar. This again, just shows the elevations of the two um, proposed signs, the, the areas for the two wall signs. Um, for those of you who have lived here forever, like myself, um, this used to be St. Francis Hospital, and this is just an idea of what used to be there. Um, this was a variance that was granted many years ago for a forty-seven square foot sign, and I think back then um, we didn't take into consideration the symbols and so forth on the wall, so it was just for the letters for the sign. Um, the first sign that's being requested is um, two hundred and twenty square feet, where fifty square feet is permitted, and so there's an area variance of a hundred and seventy square feet. Um, for this particular elevation, um, we're showing you that this is on the west side of the wall. Um, this only represents nine percent of the wall, obviously, because this wall is so large, and we just put a person on the bottom of this elevation, so you could get a sense of how um, large this wall is. This is an image showing um, if the applicant were to comply with the fifty-square-foot requirement, um, so you can see the sign is, is very small, um, given the perspective of the, you know, the height of the person. The second sign is on the north elevation, and so this is a two hundred and sixty-three square foot sign, where fifty square foot is permitted. And this is an elevation showing that wall, um, this represents one point eight percent of the um, square footage of that wall. And this is an elevation showing if they were to comply with the fifty-foot, or fifty-square-foot requirement on that particular wall.
I'm gonna interrupt you for just a moment, where, where is that taken from? Or where, where would you see that from?
Uh, that wall?
Yes.
So I'm gonna get to that in a minute, yes. Um, so again, this is just the orientation of the buildings, showing the two signs, so you can get a perspective again. Um, the north wall is this wall, uh, Mr. Chairman, that you were speaking of. And the, the reason for that sign is because there is a large proportion of um, patients who are coming to this hospital, who are obviously from the eastern side of Duchess County, who come from uh, nine G, which is this road over here, and down West Cedar, I'm sure many of you have driven that, we drove it today numerous times. Um, one of the problems that you have is there is a predominant amount of vegetation, um, that's here in front of the hospital. And this particular sign will give the patients the notification as they're getting down to that rear driveway, um, you know, how to get to the hospital and where it is. As I indicated in my application, we all know, we've all been to the hospital before, and you're generally not there going um, with a happy place in your mind, and you're generally under duress, and so it's important to the hospital that they have identification um, of where this location is for people who are arriving. Um, this shows some of that vegetation that's on West Cedar, you know, if you're traveling down West Cedar. And um, this is where you begin to see the location of that wall, is um, where there's some, there is some ground signage for adjacent properties on the other side of the road, and this is where you can begin to see that north side of the wall. Um, this just gives you a perspective of that same view from Maris College. Um, this is from uh, Washington Street, so the views of the hospital are predominantly blocked from this side. And um, these are just, again, the two signs, so that you can get a perspective of uh, what we're seeking. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, I do um, recognize that you did receive a comment letter from County Planning. Um, I acknowledge that I think that County Planning did their job, which is to compare the requested application to the code, and so we know what the code is. And I think um, everyone would recognize that this is an application for a hospital, and so the threshold test is whether or not the benefit uh, to the applicant is outweighed by the detriment to the neighbor home, you know, the neighboring properties, and this is a predominantly institutional area. We've got Maris College, um, and other heavily commercial properties, so it'd be hard to identify what the detriment to the properties would be with the signs, and certainly the benefit is obvious, you know, in providing the sufficient identification for people who are coming to the hospital.
In, in the packet, there's um, an illustration of the uh, west sign, the Simone sign. And it's illuminated, the whole wall is illuminated in blue? Is that, will the whole wall be illuminated in blue?
It's actually not in blue, and, and what happened is, we were given that application with the blue illumination, and after the fact, um, we were, we were actually before the planning board to seek site plan approval for the blue, and after the fact, we found out that the hospital was not intending to illuminate that wall with blue, so that's been withdrawn.
We were gonna make them do architectural review because of the blue, um, and then when, when we had that conversation, they confirmed that it was not gonna be lit.
Is there any other signage on the street indicating the location of the hospital?
I, I can't answer that, because I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Can you, well... When I worked on an ambulance, we had a um, a group that worked on hospital signage. And so I, I think that there's a method to, to provide signage to the hospital wi- without this. Um, but I just want you to consider that, and can you show me? Can you address the concern that the county has about where it would be visible, where, where it would be necessary, because it seems to be, what you're describing is from the eastern part of the county, they're pretty much making their way to the hospital, so by the time, I, I mean, they're not gonna miss that, that sign on Washington Street.
So if you're coming from Washington Street, the direct path to the hospital is from Washington Street to the entrance, you know, at North Road.
Right.
If you're coming from the east side of Duchess, and you're coming down West Cedar, if you miss that driveway, then you're going all the way down to West Cedar, you're making a left, and then you're coming into the main entrance. And so, you've missed that opportunity to enter the rear part of the um, the hospital, that rear entrance.
So, is it, are you trying to make sure that emergency patients or sick people can get to the emergency room, or just so people can come to the hospital for treatment or other reasons that people go to hospitals for?
I certainly can't speak to the intent of the hospital for the requested variances, but it was relayed to me that it was very important for them that all patients had a clear identification of the location of the hospital.
Okay. And... So can you show me the, the West Cedar Street views again, are you able to do that?
This view?
The West Cedar, or east, or, yeah, whatever, Cedar Street.
This is, this is the proposed wall sign from West Cedar.
Okay.
This is, this is the view on that north elevation.
Is that an actual view, or is that just a?
It is not an actual view, yeah, this is a rendering.
I, I'd like to address the county's concerns, and if there's a way to get actual views?
Um, from West Cedar, that's what you're looking for.
To where you think that the, the sign, or where the hospital thinks the sign is most important, so that we can address that county's um, concern.
Okay.
Alright. Christine?
The only question I had was when we went there and looked at the area where sign number one would be, where it used to say St. Francis Hospital?
Yes.
Is that it says WMC Health, which just doesn't say anything about a hospital, I, I was just curious about that.
Again, not, not being the hospital, but I can only relay what I think that they would say, is that, that's their image, that's their logo, that's the name of their hospital, so um, I would imagine that that's, that's why that's there, but I can find out.
And if, to fit something in there, probably you wouldn't be able to read it anyway, right?
Sorry?
If you put the whole, West Cedar, you probably wouldn't be able to read it anyway.
And it may not fit, you know, in that wall.
And how, how does that sign, the size of that sign compare to the St. Francis Hospital sign that was there?
St. Francis received an area variance for um, forty-seven square feet, so imagining a fifty... Uh, sorry, um, yeah, this isn't, this isn't categorized right, assuming there was a fifty-foot square foot sign that was permitted back then, and they received an area variance for forty-seven, I would assume it was a hundred.
Okay.
But that doesn't include the uh?
This, the logo, yeah.
Statue, bro.
Correct.
You call it a saint.
I used to call it Spider-Man, actually.
Nowadays, that would probably be calculated, I think, today's...
Part of the sign?
Yeah, we include it as part of the sign, correct.
That would've made it much larger than what we're asking for now.
Yeah, and you know, we all knew that that was, that was the hospital.
That's all I have, thank you.
Art?
I'm good.
Simona?
Um, the signs are not the entrance, right?
Um, so this, the, or the west-facing sign is the entrance from Route nine, the north-facing sign is the entrance from West Cedar. And then, both of them are nearly over the ER, you know, they're, the, the west one is more...
So that is what you'd look for if you were trying to get into the hospital?
I would think, yeah, I mean, I would think most people that are coming under duress are, are going to the ER. The westerly-facing sign is mostly over the location of the new, of the current ER, you know, and this is a trauma center.
Phyllis?
Can I see the view from west, from West Cedar, again, please, and that's the banner sign that you're looking to put up, so to speak? And that's, I'm just having trouble orientate, orienting. So, that's really where you enter from when you're in the parking garage, and where all of the medical offices are, to the hospital, correct? Like, if you go in to the atrium, that's really what that's?
So if you come in the back entrance, which is off of West Cedar, if you were going...
But that's the main, that's how they've designed the hospital, is that being the main entrance?
Yes, and then you go past the parking garage, you would make a right past the parking garage, and that brings you to the front, to the ER. If you, if you were going to the trauma center, that's, that's how you would go into the trauma center. If you were to go into the main part of the hospital, correct, the north elevation was intended to be the main entrance, which is the back, the hospital, what, what we would call the back. But you're correct.
Okay.
That is the main entrance.
Thank you.
It's just, it's an unusual campus, because it doesn't have frontage on, you know, a major roadway.
But that's how they built additions year after year, and, and needed to fit what they needed in the space.
Yes, so you're right, that is the main entrance.
Thank you.
Larry? Oh, there, okay. Simona? Tony? Tony?
And uh, no questions.
Alright, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? If you don't mind. Anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application?
Should I say it again? If you're on a phone, star six, unmute.
Alright, so before um, you do anything, does anyone else have a concern about the second sign? To, to adjourn it for, to produce some more evidence, or, I mean, I'm not ready to vote on the second sign, but if everyone... We need a supermajority, so um, five out of the six. Yeah.
I'm good with it, because again, from West Cedar, you really can't see anything.
Okay.
Uh, the second sign?
Okay. Okay.
Well, I, I guess I wonder if the issue is people are gonna miss the entrance to the hospital on West Cedar. It might be better to put a bigger directional sign on West Cedar, where you would want them to come by the hospital. Just my thought. Because really, what you're gonna be doing is kind of putting the hospital banner sign into a neighborhood. My opinion.
It is, I just wanna make sure that um, I did quote the intent, you know, Mike, I don't know if you, if you agree with this, but I did quote the intent of the institutional district. It's intended to preserve and protect private and public educational and hospital uses in the town. Maris, Vassar, Duchess, and St. Francis are all located in this centralized campus setting, and they're vital community assets. So it recognizes the importance of these institutions, and provides protections for their continued growth and operation, um, while ensuring that nearby residential neighborhoods are protected, and so these signs really are not directed towards those residential districts, they're really pointed towards the other institutional district, or uses, which is Maris, and then the commercial uses um, to the west.
Just to be clear, I'm not against the sign, I just want, just a little more information?
Yes.
To support a vote, but, Tony?
So what is your question, adjourn that?
Just, we could, we could approve one and adjourn the second, or are you in a rush for?
I would say they're always in a rush, but, but I, you know, I can't, I can't say they are or they aren't.
Okay. I mean, I, if, if there was a problem, then I would, assuming everyone's good with the first one, I would approve. I would approve that one and then adjourn the second part of it.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that? And Tony?
Yeah, I'm okay with that also.
Okay. So we okay with closing? How will we do this where we can vote on one and not the other, or?
Well, you can just vote on the first, I mean, technically it would be closed as to, I'm not even sure whether it's technically you close as to that sign, but there's no prohibition on you voting on the one sign and just leaving the public hearing open and adjourning it until next month for the other sign.
All right, is everyone comfortable with that? No?
I don't think it's necessary, but.
To go back to Phyllis's question though, that sign that says, the long sign, the banner sign as you're calling it, that's viewable from coming down from Marist College, coming down from Route 9. So there probably aren't any houses over there. It's all Marist housing or doctors' offices or, I don't think there's a, there might be one house that's a rental at the bottom of West Cedar. Everything else is, is, I'd say, college property.
I'm just concerned about whether it's, it's going to satisfy its purpose. Not, not so much a concern about sign pollution, but if it doesn't, in my mind, if you really can't, if it's not helpful, then that's kind of what the county says, and I kind of agree with that.
Well, the fact that it says hospital, I think, is helpful in as to the fact that the great big sign doesn't say hospital. So.
Okay. So I'm still gonna. I don't have any problem with the first one.
The first one is the.
The smaller one.
The small one.
Right, the westbound, west side.
West side.
Sign one.
So Tony, Tony, or Phyllis, do you have a problem with the second sign? Would you prefer the adjournment or would you prefer to vote this evening? Because you need a minimum of five because of the county's comments. So there are three on this side, and.
You don't have a problem with both signs? Okay.
I, all things considered, I don't have that big a problem with the sign. I just don't underst, I don't think it's going to suit the purpose. I, I don't understand why they didn't put a bigger pedestal sign or something at that back entrance where people are looking to come in on West Cedar.
I'm trying to, is there a monument sign on North Road that says?
Yes, there is.
A small one. That says hospital.
It's not very large.
It is difficult because there are a lot of new people moving into the area and college students probably don't know where the hospital is, even though they're right next to it. However, I don't know. But if, I don't get the sense that it's going to be really crazy enough, big enough to be seen if you're coming down West Cedar.
Is there anyone else that would vote against the second sign? Then I think that there's a super majority. Then I move to close the public hearing?
Second?
All those in favor signify by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion fails.
Thank you.
That brings us item number 10, 44 La Grange Avenue. Is there anyone here for that application?
Good evening, this is John Sullivan, Lockwood Architecture, representing the applicant. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Sullivan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right.
Trying to turn my video on. And also, is it okay if I share my screen?
Please.
Okay, can you see my site plan here, my drawing sheet?
Yes.
Okay, so we're here this evening for a area variance relative to the, I guess, the east or, but the Fairmont and La Grange corner, which is the southeast portion of property. Where basically there's a handicap ramp on the zoom in here. During the course of construction, last year, the building had to be raised three feet. So in order to satisfy ADA, we had to create an entry ramp along the Fairmont side, which is here. And then along with the Green side, we have some steps. Neither of those are, need to be compliant with the front yard setbacks. So, but what does need to comply is the connection around this corner. So that is why we're here before you this evening. This, I have some elevations here. This is the corner. This is the La Grange Avenue elevation, so this is the corner right here. And then this would be the Fairmont side. So this connection from this point to here is where we need an area variance. Front yard requires five feet or a few inches on each of, each side. And part of this application too, we were in front of you back in June of 2020. There were four area variances required at that time, which were approved. The zoning administrator and town staff has asked that we have those reapproved. So that's the application.
To clarify, I think, too, one of them is slightly changed, right? So the, the rear setback is not any closer to the property line than it was before, but because the building is three feet higher, we just, that's actually a new, we're counting that as a new variance. So three of the old variances are just reapproval straight out. One of them is very slightly changed. I did mention in my staff report that another thing that's changed is that the property right behind that is now owned by the applicant. So their neighbor is themselves. I just want to point that out, so.
Isn't the height variance actually five feet in change?
Uh, maybe.
From 33 roughly to 38? So it's, it's actually five feet.
There was never a variance granted for the height of the building. We're way below the required maximum height is 45 feet. So we're still, even with raising the building three feet, we're, we're at about 38 feet. That's measured to the ridge. The building, I believe in Arlington Town Center District is measured to the, from the average point of the fascia to the highest point, so we're still, we're way below the maximum 45 feet.
I feel you're right, or my math was wrong, or someone's math was wrong. So it's actually an increase of four feet of the prior building. So the only thing the board is considering is, is the fact that it's now four feet taller, does that affect your decision on the variance? And the other thing that's changed, as Mike just said, is that this applicant now owns the back property, so. So it's not, the, the distance isn't, the height is not.
It's not the problem.
A variance, right.
When you say the back property, do you mean the property on Fair, on Fairmont?
No, the houses are right on here.
We own that the back. 42 and 44, which is this one.
Right, okay.
I mean, another thing that changes, that's different with this than it was when you last saw, was because they own that property now, they've gone ahead and gotten an amended site plan, and their, their off-street parking is now provided here rather than across La Grange Avenue and another property that they owned, which had been previously approved. But that's not part of the ZBI application. It doesn't impact any of the variances. But just if you're confused by it because you saw it before, that's the explanation in short.
And Mike, excuse me, and Mike, you're saying that we initially approved the outdoor dining that we're, is going to be on both sides of the building, essentially the patios slash outdoor dining areas? That was previously approved?
No, although the walkway was not, there was no walkway there because it was all at ground level.
I'm asking, because when we were there talking to the owner, I guess, both sides in front of the windows here, it's going to be, he said that it's going to be used for patio slash dining. And that's going to go right up to the edge of the sidewalk. Is that something we approved back initially or is that a brand, is this brand new?
I don't believe outdoor dining was part of the application.
No, there's no, there's no, there's not going to be any outdoor dining with this application. That's, that's correct, it was not approved by the planning board. And this is simply for connection around the corner of the building, seems like a nice feature in terms of considering the elevation to be able to walk around. I mean, depending on where you're parked, it's, this is really, this, the Fairmont side is the main entrance, which is right here. So if you were parked on, let's say, La Grange Avenue, it might be nice to not pick him up these steps and walk around.
So the ramps didn't require any variances from this board?
But I'm just, I'm just stating what the owner explained to us when we were there.
I understood him to say that he didn't, he didn't intend for it to be outdoor dining. He didn't know what, he didn't know what a restaurant might want to use it for, but that wasn't his intention.
Outdoor dining would require, I believe, and the ATC would require a separate authorization from the planning board, I'm pretty sure for the ATC, so. Because it's not a sidewalk, you can do sidewalk dining, but this would not be a sidewalk. It would be a, a part of the building, so it would probably need a separate approval. But that's neither here nor there, if it's a walkway, it's a walkway.
Okay. Thank you.
Christine?
How, how wide is that walkway?
John? John, are you there? Oh, he took his, he took his headphones off. He's putting them back on. John, are you there?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's okay. What's the width of the, of the walkway? Somebody was asked.
So on the, the ramp itself is four feet. And then on the, on the Green side, it's, it's a little under five foot. Because we have five feet from the property line to the edge of the building. And then, you know, we left a little room, a few inches just for, you know, so we're not encroaching off the property line. But this, you know, it's about four and a half feet on the La Grange side. And then over here, like I said, it's about four. So you have some landscaping, a landscape planner in here.
It's not very wide if you were to want to put tables or something like that. I can't imagine that would work, but.
That's all, thank you.
All right, anything else?
No, I'm done.
Simone?
Um, just to, so I understand it, the variance is only required at the corner? Okay.
Because the ramps are, when you ADA accessible and entrances, et cetera, are not, they're allowed to be in the setback.
So anything that's like listed as elevated walk exterior is considered a ramp? All on both sides of the building?
Basically from this location around the corner to wherever the door is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's sort of the extra piece.
I see.
Right, yeah. Yeah. It's a little strange because, because a portion of it is exempt, but that piece of it is within the setback.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience that wishes to comment on this?
Can you stop sharing your screen, please? Thank you.
You can state your name, but you're still sworn. Thank Christine.
Robert Rubin, again, One Drum Court, the town of Poughkeepsie. And I have no problem with what's being presented here. I would only ask, which I believe that this board takes very seriously, the flavor of the neighbor, of the neighborhood be preserved. I'm a member of Veterans Post, and if I recall correctly, there are a number of cemeteries along on that road. And I would just ask that the board consider that the, as a matter of fact, the person that my post is named after is buried along in one of those cemeteries. And I would ask that the flavor and character of the neighborhood be preserved with whatever decision is rendered here. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, I do.
All right, why don't you state your name?
Vincentino Pol Castro.
Ms. Pol Castro, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what would you like to say?
I would like, if Mr. Sullivan could finish explaining the other two portions of his request, 3B and 3C, about the refuge, just the storage container and about the residential dwelling units. I do live on La Grange Avenue, that's why I'm, I'm interested.
Okay, so in the initial application, I guess, back in June of 2020, we had to obtain an area variance relative to the refuge area, which is within 50 feet of a residential zone. That was approved at that time. I can certainly show the location. We didn't change any of that, this is just simply a reapproval.
Could you show me where that's going?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
At this location right here.
You have to share your screen?
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
That's this location here, so here's Fairmont, La Grange Ave. And this is the location of the refuge area.
So that'll be going toward, I'm not sure I see your mouse. Is it going toward the front of the house next door?
Here's Fairmont Ave, here's La Grange. This is the front of the building along La Grange Avenue, this is the front here of 42 La Grange.
Okay, so it looks like it's toward the side.
It's really not visible from the street.
Okay, I was just curious where, now, are these going to be dumpsters that you're going to have in the back?
No, 45-gallon trailers.
Okay. And how often will garbage be getting collected, once a week or?
Twice a week.
Twice a week, okay. Okay. Thank you, that takes care of B. And could you explain C for me, please?
I'm, I'm, forgive me, I'm not quite sure what C is.
It says, something which provides that residential dwelling units located immediately above the ground floor, second floor, third floor, non-residential use shall not be counted against the maximum residential dwelling unit density. Provided the building meets applicable coverage and open space requirements, sufficient parking for the residential uses is provided and open space is set aside for the dwelling units as provided herein. The project as proposed does not provide any open space for the proposed residential units.
So again, this particular item was also approved in June of 20. And I believe, based on the location of this project, that there was, you know, the Vassar College is nearby, there's park space over there. We do satisfy the parking requirement, which is adjacent to the building. All of these spots are dedicated, or most of them are dedicated to the dwelling units on the second floor of 44 La Grange, as well as the two family dwelling here at 42 La Grange.
And if I understood, you have a restaurant for a capacity of 60 people?
45.
Oh, 45. And the town has given you a variance of seven parking spots out in front?
No, the planning board has the ability to, I guess, provide, I don't know if waiver is the correct, correct word?
Waiver, okay.
Because of its, Arlington Town Center District allows that.
Right.
Possibly town staff could help me.
Yeah, the, in the Arlington Town Center District, the planning board can waive the, the parking for the commercial businesses. Most, many of the commercial businesses in Arlington don't have off-street parking, so it's a fairly common situation. What the planning board does, however, usually require, and they did in this case, was that all of the off, all of the residential units have off-street parking available because you cannot park on the street at night, overnight, in the wintertime in Arlington. So the parking that was provided for this project was sufficient for all of the apartments on both properties. And that's, that's how that was arrived at.
You can only park, you can't park from November 1st.
Right.
To April 1st.
Overnight, that's why the residences need to be.
But for a 45 people restaurant, they felt there was adequate parking considering one house across the street has five people. There's a hairdresser, there's a dentist.
That's correct. The planning board made that determination already. That was approved by the planning board several months ago. Actually last.
Also, this establishment is not open 24 hours a day.
What are the, what will be the hours of this establishment? Do you know?
Chris Alardi is on, on a Zoom meeting, maybe he can, um, I think it's like three or four in the afternoon. It depends on my date of week, but it's going to close at about 11:00 PM. Opening times, I, I'm not sure. I don't recall. Hello, anybody there? Can you guys hear me? Yes, hello ma'am. Uh, yes, from, it's going to be open from four o'clock to 10 o'clock at night.
All right, if you just want to identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Christopher Alardi, I'm the owner of the building.
Mr. Alardi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
It is, yes.
Okay. All right, ma'am, did you have any other comments that you wanted to make about this application?
And, um, there won't be, um, I don't know. An additional parking from the tenants upstairs and the restaurant folks is adequate according to the town planning board?
Who's speaking to me, ma'am?
Anybody?
Yeah, this.
Oh, yeah, so.
Sony, John, Chris.
Sorry, I was reiterating, if all of the dwelling units for both of these sites are satisfied in this parking area back here. So the residential component would have more than enough parking. Um, the restaurant, you know, it's encouraged that people walk in, there's parking all around the site.
What, what is that noise?
Chris, maybe commute? Yeah, I'm at work, sorry, yes. So it's, um, that, that's kind of the stance on, on the commercial portion of it. So, but there are a couple of spots available for the restaurant, particularly here. This is a handicap spot. Um, there is a ramp that comes out the rear of the building that leads to this area. So there, there's handicap parking for somebody that might, you know, a patron of this restaurant. Um, and there's parking all around. So it closes at 10 o'clock at night, there's no, you know, overnight parking requirements.
How many parking spots would you have in back of the restaurant, if any?
I believe it's two.
So those would basically be designated for handicapped access?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. When, uh, it's time for garbage pickup, would the garbage pickup be in the front or?
LaGrange Avenue.
Okay, another question. For, um, deliveries for food, would that be on LaGrange or on Fairmont?
LaGrange Ave.
Okay. I think I'm done. Thank you very much, everybody.
Anyone else who wishes to comment on this application?
John, can you stop sharing?
Yes.
Anyone else on the Zoom? All right. Unless anyone else has any other questions, I'll move to close the public hearing. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number 11, uh, 36 Hasbrook Drive. Is there someone here for that application?
Good evening, uh, my name is, I represent all that goes up.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do, ma'am.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Uh, this application is to, uh, raise the second floor onto this two-story, um, family dwelling from a dormer style to a whole upstairs only in the rear.
All right, and is it?
Moving permit.
Okay. It doesn't extend the house any closer to the lot line, does it?
No, it does not. It's only extending up instead of outwards.
Okay. And I think someone may have a question. There's a shed parked on the front lawn, is that?
Yes, that is temporarily stored while we moved in. That would, that's actually going to be removed this week.
Okay. All right, then those are all the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Simone?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
Uh, no questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on that application? Uh, there's no, no one in the audience, anyone on Zoom?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you want to identify yourself?
Sure, Steve Kilburg, I live in the file on Hall Court, which is a landhouse on the left in that, on that street. Uh, walk up Hasbrook and Hall Court, and that's on the corner of Hasbrook, if I remember correctly.
Sorry, I'm just going to ask you that. Hang on just a second.
Mr. Gilbert, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, then go ahead.
Okay, if I read it correctly, I thought it said that it was asking for a variant for, for, because it's a corner lot, to encroach upon the one side because two sides become your park yard. Is that correct? Or is that, is that not the wording of the request?
Uh, that, well.
Yeah, it's not becoming anymore. It's, the house is not getting extended sideways or anything. It's being, the house is where it is now. The only extension that's going to be on, and I don't know why it's written in that way, but the only extension that we're trying to do is to raise the second floor in the rear of the house up so we can have more space on the second floor. Because right now it's a dormer stock. And there's.
Honestly, you would agree, you would agree that where you're asking for a setback variation? And the reason I am calling about it is there's a concern in the neighborhood about parking. And if you were to, if you were to encroach on that the way I read it, you would not be able to park. And that's what it says the sideline. So that, I inferred it as the sideline of, of Hall Court, which is where the driveway is. And instead it would only, it would be, it would be reducing it to 15 foot setback. And therefore you couldn't park a car 15 feet.
So the existing house is set back 15 feet. I'm the attorney for the board. The existing house is set back 15 feet and this is going up. So it's technically a further encroachment on the 15 feet.
Existing house does not set back 15 feet, I can assure you that, at least 30. I don't know exactly what it is, it's not my property. And I'm not trying to oppose it, I'm just trying to say, if it's going to go any wider, that house, or closer to that sideline, or you call it park yard because it's a corner lot, then where are the cars going to park? Because as we used to talk about, same in our neighborhood, winter time, there is no parking walk street.
Can I?
I'm sorry, there's only, you're only on a parking walk street, I apologize.
Can I just, uh, interject one moment? This is, uh, Mike Welty from the town staff. I just want you to notice that the, the property line and where the street are, are in very different spots according to the, the, uh, survey that was provided. So the house may appear to be 30 feet from the street as you, as you see it. Um, but the property line is actually many feet, uh, in, from there. And so the setback is 15 feet. That's actually the setback of the house to the property line. The, as I understand this application, the, the, that is not changing. Just the mass of the building going up will be at that 15 feet from the property line will be higher than it is today. So it's not moving any closer, it doesn't change any of the space between the road and the house. Um, it, and so that, I understand why the language is, can be a little bit confusing, but that, that is the correct language. Does that help?
Well, we're literally not on the survey and the ability to see that.
I, I understand, I understand. I just, I'm explaining it so that hopefully it's clearer and certainly you're welcome to, um, you know, come and look at the, the survey.
Is it online?
It's, it is online, it's on the, on the website, but.
Right. The survey, if you wanted to take a look at it in this for any future meetings as well, for anyone who may be interested, the materials that are being considered by the board at the meeting do get posted on the town's website. And so if you click on the agenda and the links for that meeting, you can see the survey. So, and you can see the details for this application and the, all the others that are being considered tonight.
Okay, I apologize, I'm, I'm on my way to a wake in line, so I apologize, I'm just trying to do my best to call in. And if that's all it's doing, then, uh, then there's no objection to it. I, again, the way it's written is asked for a sideline setback.
Yep. Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, any, any, any other questions? Um, then I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number 12. Joseph Soprano, uh, I'm sorry, Sparasino, 72 Sunset Avenue? You should put my glasses on before you.
Mr. Sparasino, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Um, we're just looking to do an addition off the back of my yard, a single-story addition. Just, we just need more room. We've had a, uh, we have a five-year-old son and then we have a three-month-old daughter. And we have a two-bedroom house and we're just out of room. We like where we live, we want to stay. Just wanted to make the house a little bigger.
Okay. And so the, the plans that you provided, um, is it, is it fair to say that nothing encroaches more on the side line than, than what the, how the existing house?
Right, can I, yes. So I had an exist, um, an existing deck there, which is going to be coming out and I'm going to put a new one in. But the new deck is not going to go any closer to the side yard than the old one was. But I guess the only thing that has changed in the past 10 years or whenever since that deck's been in is the code. They now want 20 as opposed to 10. I have a good relationship with my neighbor, I actually talk to him, he doesn't care and I just, that's the loophole I'm caught in here. But I'm not going any further, taking up any more space that way to where.
And in fact, the addition is actually smaller or farther away from the side lot lines than the main house?
Wait, one more time, I'm sorry.
The addition is farther away from the side lot line than the existing house? According to this drawing?
Well, the addition is coming off the back, it's, it's, well, no, because it's actually, it's going back, but it's going to actually approach that side by two feet. I think that's the other part of where it was the two feet or something.
Well, yes, but you, the one, your drawing shows that the one side of the house, the left side as you're facing from Sunset Avenue is 10 feet from the side lot line?
Yes.
And the new addition will be 18 feet from the side lot line?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm confused a little bit there. You see, you have the drawing in front of you.
I do.
So you see my existing house in the back?
Yeah.
It's going to be that same shape, but it's just getting offstep two feet towards, yes, the left. If I'm standing at Sunset looking at my house. So, I just.
Why don't you take a look at this drawing and tell me if it's accurate? So the shaded part there is the addition?
Yes.
And that's narrower than the main house?
Um, Yes, I'm sorry, yes it is, yes it is. Because from looking in from Sunset, you see this part of the house on that, that's my son's room. Yes, yes, it is, it's more narrow. Yes, because this is the part of my house, and yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Less wider, okay. All right, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Simone?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? There's no one in, in the audience, anyone on Zoom? All right, seeing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number 13, uh, 3480 North Road.
Hello.
What's your name?
Nancy Forrest.
Nancy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Okay. Uh, I am here representing, uh, CPD. Location has, um, two businesses. It has the Chestnut Market, which is a new branding for the convenience store and a Dunkin' Donuts store. They have a pylon sign, a monument sign out on the road that currently has an EMD sign on it. I understand now from the board that they're not allowed in that district. Um, I didn't put it there, but they want to keep that one there. Uh, clean it up and, um, do a new one, a new unit. I mean, I understand that, um, had, has been made a, a center now, not a hamlet, but a center. Um, I can only say that, uh, these signs are a lot less dangerous than those that are hand-changed simply because you can't not read them in a quick drive-by as you're coming upon them or whatever. They're over 90% now, they, uh, there are no federal or state guidelines for them, forcing them to using. Are they weights and measures and, um, they try to push them to use them? Uh, one good thing about them is if they do have an electronic pricing, if any of those digits go out, there are people riding around all the time, they get fined big time when one of those numbers go out. So like everyone else in the wave of things going, uh, for gas stations, some towns allow them only for gas stations. They have separate regulations for gas stations. And so the ordinance does allow them. So that's one that we were looking to get. They have it at 54 square feet and 34% of it being EMD, but it's just the letters, the numbers that are lighting. So those numbers are off a little bit. Uh, then there are no, based on, uh, my comments here from the town, there were never any signs on the north side of the building facing Heritage Shopping Center, the new shopping center. There were never any, um, signs designed for there. The east elevation, there's always been offering nine, a north side entrance into the shopping center that is still there. Now it's a shared driveway, but you could always come in that side. And so when you are on the east side of the building, there is no freestanding sign. And that is why they would like the two small signs on the east side of the building. People coming in that entrance, and now they're using it a lot more because it's joined in. It's like a common drive from Heritage too. So there's a lot more traffic coming up that one. So they would like the two small signs on the east side advertising each of the businesses. Um, south side, I don't think they have any problem. I don't think that the squirrel on its own there, um, is necessary. But, uh, the two small signs would like to, uh, be there as McDonald's and I believe Applebee's also have three sides with signs. Uh, you questioned the one on the, um, about leaving the Dunkin' Donuts sign on the west wall and, uh, removing the other. Um, of course, they'd like to have both. And the reason for the location of that where you say in spirit, it's actually above the roof line is the planning has, there's, there's a drive-through on that end. And so they, you don't see it now, but there's going to be a very tall tree line there across the whole west side of the property. So they shifted that up there so that they'd know if they pull in that entrance there, that, that's where the Dunk, they're going to find the Dunkin' Donuts, anyone traveling or Maris Company, whoever. I also don't think that the monument sign really is too terrible. I don't, I'm sure that it was a board way before you that, uh, the pylon sign on the opposite side of that driveway is like 200 square feet, 100 square foot of it is a bright orange lit Home Depot face. So given the size of this sign and the amount that's actually lit with the letters, quite minimal. So I'm here to see what you're going to let them do. And anything that was put up prior, you know me over 40 years here, I don't just do them, I always get my permits. So if anyone has any questions for me?
Did I understand you to say that you don't need the squirrel?
The one on, on the south side, um, that's kind of like low on the building, um, I don't think that's necessary if you have your drawing there on the south side, I'm just going to put them down here. I think that, you know, this is our normal logo, this is probably the 28th store I've done for them in a four-county area, so. So that one, I definitely think, I mean, I don't think any of them are overly large. I just think that piece is unnecessary. But the Dunkin', all of the Dunkins that we proposed on the three sides are the same size. They're just go, you know, the channel letters, Dunkin', and then just the logo branding for the Chestnut Market. And as I said, um I think when they came in looking at the center, they didn't think it was a problem having the three sides. And some have gotten them in. I don't know if those have permits or if they got variances, I don't know. Or if it was before anything changed in the ordinance. I know McDonald's wasn't because that's new, but.
And the EMD signs?
I'm sorry?
The what's the position on that?
On what?
On the EMDs, on the electronics?
Um obviously, they they'd like to keep it. I mean, that's, like I said, I think it's up to something like 94, 96% across the country now are that way. I know you mentioned the one on Main Street in Wobbingers, I actually did that sign. But you're sitting on the sidewalk, you're on a little two-lane highway, it's 20 miles an hour. You you wouldn't have to look to see what the price is because it's just like right here. It's a difference of a four-lane highway with turnoffs going both north and left. And we all know what looking for pricing now is important. People, I know I do it, check everybody's prices on the driveway, I know where to go.
And specifically regarding the county's concerns, which ones would you, which which would you agree with?
All right, on the wall sign, okay, as I said, the north side. We we never did do any on that. They're saying would be sufficient to, where, okay. South-facing, the street-facing sign along with the south-facing Chestnut Market sign would be sufficient to inform drivers assessing the site. So those two chestnut signs, I I agree.
You said north side?
Uh no, not the north side. The, it would be the west side, street-facing and south-facing, which is the drive that comes up from Route 9.
The ones that you want to keep?
Those I would definitely um want to keep. They um in that same paragraph on wall signs, they uh say to consider the Dunkin' sign on the east facade. And we would like to keep the, for the same reason that that's the north entrance. And there is a lot, lot more traffic coming in through there now because of the other plaza. We'd like to have the small chestnut one as well. And moving on down, the roof sign in spirit, I've kind of explained that, that um the reason it was pushed to its highest limit, even though it does follow the code, it's higher just so it can be seen because the tree line was something that Planning Board has put into the site plan. So that when you're driving down and you don't see lines of cars lined up for the drive-through, they'd rather keep that.
Drive-through is going to be facing Route 9?
That's the street side, that's what you'd call street side of the building. And what the ordinance says, they're allowed a street sign. So we'd like to have both businesses have the sign that they are allowed on the street side. As I said, they're really quite small when you're given the distance from the highway.
Um how hard would it be for you to provide some renderings of, you know, you showed the the proposed exterior elevations, but I'd like to actually see what it looks like from from the street? Is it possible to do that?
Take photos and input them into the photos?
Yeah.
Sure.
And show and show where the signs would be and what it looks like from?
And what the size, so you get a better idea?
Yeah.
Judging the distance, I can certainly do that. On the um east side, should I take them from the actual?
I'd like to see for wherever you want to sign, I'd like to see from Route 9, from wherever you want it to be visible.
Okay, so from like in front of Home Depot?
Yeah.
Looking at the east side and from?
Wherever you think it's most important.
Coming in the drive-off Cedar or whatever it is there, coming towards the building and then down on Route 9. Yeah, I can do that.
And if it's, you know, big enough for us to actually appreciate what it looks like?
Mm-hmm.
You're able to do that?
11 by 17 would be okay.
Yeah.
The west elevation though, you mentioned that there was landscaping, uh which has been required. So I think in order to really understand what it might look like, you would need to also render the landscaping. You know, show what the tree height and everything would be on the.
I can probably get that elevation from um whoever
Yeah.
was doing the drawings for the uh for the planning board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was was part of your question, the west elevation Dunkin', bringing it down like the county wanted it?
Um well, I'd like to see where everything is.
Can we see that? As a second rendering instead of being above the?
Yeah, so if you could do a rendering that satisfies the county so we can compare what you want.
Right, it'll be behind the trees, okay. They were pretty big trees, they, and it's, you know, up the hill. Okay, so I'll get the three sides from different distances and put it into photographs that are large enough for you to get a good idea of what it would look like.
Can I, I have one more question, please? Are you done, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, probably.
It might, in instead of, if you look at the east and north elevations, you have Dunkin', Dunkin', Chestnut with the squirrel.
Yes, the north is nothing.
So north does that, north has Dunkin'.
Yeah, no, if you have a drawing, it probably had been replaced and the and the initial one is there. We're not putting anything on the north wall facing Heritage. We're not requesting anything for there.
Okay. See where that problem? Um so the question would then revert back to the east elevation?
Correct.
I don't know how the board or how our zoning administrator would take that. But if we, if we, if you took Chestnut Market and then your friendly little squirrel there and Dunkin', could we have them put on a directional sign at the driveway instead of on the side of the building, which would be less intrusive? That was a question.
Well, that's really a zoning question for Chrissy because if it's not, it's not really a directional sign. So it's a question of whether you want to allow a variance for another freestanding sign. Right.
Rather than the building.
And that would also um be, they, for drive-through purposes, they will have the low signs for a drive-through. So I don't know where you would would locate that.
Well, if if it would say Dunkin' Drive-Thru.
Just drive-through. No, just probably say drive-through.
My question is still revert back to, would it be feasible to?
Right, it wouldn't eliminate.
Propose?
It would remove any variances, but it.
It would change, it would change, it would get it off the building and out to the ground level.
Right.
Which to me would be less offensive.
That that may still require a variance.
Right.
Right, we're just different variants, it may be more palatable than, if you will, than these signs all around the edge of the building. That's just me, but just questions.
Simone? Christine, did I ask you?
Yeah, no, I'm I'm good, I'm listening, thank you.
Sorry.
On a freestanding sign without the EMD, we don't have a picture of that, right? We only have the proposed sign that includes it. Could we have that?
It will, I mean, yeah, it'll be the same sign, it just will, it like it's not lit. Um another awkward.
Would it be like half the size or would it be like the full size?
No, it would be the full of what's allowed.
It would be, it would be the stick-up numbers?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
That's, that's a little bit um a little more difficult to change, certainly they'd have to use a polearm or something.
I do have a question. Uh on the south elevation, did you say you would be willing to get rid of the second squirrel?
Yes, the one on the bottom right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't believe that's necessary and I also believe there's parking there in front of the stores, so.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
Uh yeah, just a little bit of clarification. It's a little bit confusing. So looking at your elevations, I understand where it says north elevation, you're not proposing that Dunkin' sign there?
Correct, no.
Okay, and on the south elevation, you're willing to uh remove the the squirrel closer to the ground?
Yes, no, get rid of that.
Yeah, get get rid of it.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the uh west elevation is the one that's parallel to Route 9?
Correct.
And the reason this is above the uh the edge of the roof line would be what?
Because the planning board, if you look at that drawing, um where you see the orange line coming across?
Okay.
Um they're going to have trees from north to south on that property line.
Okay.
Covering up because that's where the drive-through will be. And Planning Board did not want the line of cars there in the in the drive-through window and everything exposed to Route 9.
Okay, so this this is an attempt to uh to get the word Dunkin' above the tree line, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
So if somebody's coming in that intersection there and coming up of it, of it, they know they want to be in the left lane if they're looking to go to Dunkin' Donuts because there's two lanes.
Isn't the freestanding sign right in front of the building there too? I mean, it's on Route 9.
It's on the bottom corner, but so is the one on the opposite side of the drive that has all the stores in it. So it doesn't tell you and there, you know, you have the left turn or right turn when you come up off Route 9. So if someone's going to Dunkin' and they're turning in there, they know they want to be in the left lane because they saw that it's over here.
Right, but by then you're already looking at the front of the building.
Isn't that sign at the other entrance?
What's that, the the big sign on the other drive, yes, the big one with the Home Depot?
It's not on the mobile.
With the Home Depot?
But that's down by Applebee's.
That's the next one down, yes.
So it's not in front of mobile?
No, it's not in front of mobile.
So the trees that would be on the drive-through side, they won't extend all the way to the front? So you'd still be able to see that chestnut squirrel on the right side?
Yeah, that's, that's going to be my next question.
No, this is, this is the south elevation. This is the facing Route 9 here. Bottom left.
No, I have on the west, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
West side is facing Route 9.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, this is facing Route 9 and the tree line will go from front to back of the building.
I have a little squirrel on my picture.
Yeah, there is, there's a squirrel with the Chestnut Market, it's.
You'd be moving that squirrel as well?
Um they they want it, the squirrel goes with their branding. So that was kind of a um a last, last-minute one that they had had put on there. It was denied and the point is if the tree line is going to be there.
But the squirrel is down by the road on the proposed sign you want to put there, so they already know that's a brand.
Correct, but.
My question would be, do you?
It's copyrighted branding for all signage, yeah.
My question would be, do you, my question would be, do they really need that squirrel?
They don't, they don't need the west side, as far as I'm concerned, the west side squirrel and chestnut sign. Because where it's located, if the tree line's there, it's not going to be seen anyway. But the Dunkin', I feel, is important to them.
Okay, thanks. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this? All right, I don't see anyone. Anyone from Zoom? And you want to adjourn this to November 17th, November 14th?
Will you be able to have the renderings done?
November, when is the next meeting?
14th, I think.
November 14th? Okay, and you would, uh I will bring them into Sonya, copies of them, how many copies would we like? Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
I'll move to adjourn this to the number 14th. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any discussion, any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, I'll see you on the 14th.
That brings us to item number 14, 9 La Grange Avenue. Is there someone here from, okay?
Good evening, how is everybody? My name is Brendan Petrelli with Mori Arf Capex, representing the owner.
Mr. Petrelli, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
And if it's all right with the board, I'll share my screen.
Very well.
Hey, I'm sure everybody's familiar with the location. Um we are on La Grange Avenue, just closer to the Ring and Avenue side. Our property is the one that's indicated by the dark dash lines here, it's 9 La Grange. Currently, there is a shed that's located unfortunately in the shadowy area here of the, uh under the tree. Try to zoom in there a little bit. Um you can't really see it here, but it's located to the rear of the property as a three-car garage. There's a gravel driveway, very narrow, and a small parking area here to the back. The main residence is a two-family residence currently. It has one unit on the first floor and a second-story um unit as well. Currently, the parcel is and will remain about 7,500 square feet. What we intend to do with the parcel is to, let's zoom back out here. All right. Thank you. Here is fighting with me. So our proposal includes uh some improvements to the site. So what we'd like to do is, I'll zoom into this area here. What we'd like to do is move the um, because the garage is in disrepair, we're going to actually tear it down. It's it's actually not even a safe structure at this point, so we need to rebuild it. We want to create a four-unit apartment building in the existing two-family. We want to create a single, uh a first-story adaptable unit for handicap usability on that first story. We want to have another unit on the second story and we're going to expand the attic to create a third story, which will also have two units in it. The first floor will then have a handicap-accessible roof and ramp from the exterior. We will now have handicap-accessible parking. We need to widen the driveway for the fire department's um common sense, we are in front of the planning board. And we paved the parking area so that we can have all of the required parking in this area. To have the mobility in the parking area that we require, we want to push the garage to the rear of the property. It'll be a two-car garage with a small amount of storage instead of a three-car. It's uh the exact same footprint, but we're going to be pushing it to the rear again to get those maneuvering aisles in the rear of the property. It also includes some exterior improvements to the building. We're going to re-clad, uh re-insulate, um you know, just really freshen up the site. We've got landscaping, site lighting improvements. The reason that we feel like these are the variances that we're looking for, which is, one is density, the amount of units. And the other area variances we are looking at are related to moving the garage to the rear of the property. The density uh variance, I think, is very much in keeping with what is on the site now, uh in the area now in the neighborhood. I mean, our our next-door neighbor is in a four-unit on 7,500 square feet. The unit next to it, the property next to him is four units on 7,500, uh 15,000, uh 15,000 square feet. And then the the property next door to them is eight units on 7,500 square feet. You go across the street to 12 and 14 and 18 La Grange, those are all four units on 7,500 square feet. So it's very similar to what's on the rest of our property or what's in the rest of the neighborhood. The other thing I'd like to point out here too is our neighbor again, their garage is also located, this dark line here in case their existing garage. Our garage would be located almost in the exact same plane as theirs. So just in keeping with the the general um neighborhood's uh geometries. The other uh requirements are, as I mentioned, they're all side yard setbacks or setback related to moving the garage back to just give it that extra maneuverability. I would like to ask for some clarification on the variances that are listed. It was my interpretation that we were looking for a um setback for a rear yard only and not a side yard because the zone is listed as a zero requirement for side yard setbacks. We did receive a memorandum that described that this is an accessory structure, which was had was different setbacks were applied to it, but after reading that section, it. it appeared that it was only applicable within residential districts. Uh, and I may be interpreting that wrong, but I just want to make sure we have the right variances that we're applying for. Um, and we're not, obviously not in a residential district here. We're in the ATC district, which is a town center district. So, um, I'd like some clarity on that as well. Uh, other than that, I, I'll leave it to the board with some questions.
Chrissy, you're still there?
I'm not sure that she is. Actually, we learned that she was in a bit of a fender bender. Uh, so she's not probably on the phone right now. But Lisa, you, you...
She was earlier.
She was earlier, yeah, yeah.
I'll, why don't you guys discuss the rest and I'll check it out.
All right, okay.
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, you are, okay.
Hey.
Yeah, did you hear that question?
Yes.
Okay.
Um...
And what's your answer?
So, I mean, that's one of the wonderful things about the code is that Section 21022 sends them per accessory structures to 21048, but then 21048 says, um, not, um, 21048 says, um... That's only, um, applies to residential zones.
Right, my recollection is in other instances, we have applied this section to, um, districts such as this, beyond residential zones because the actual district itself says, "As per 21048, this is what you should do." And so, um, but I'm pulling up 21048 as we just, as we...
Yeah, it's, I think that was my mispeak. Yes, 21048, yeah. Yeah, 21048 says "in a residential district", and 21022 sends them to 21048.
Well, and the other thing about 21048 when we've looked at it is the first sentence says,[729.41][729.61]"In a residential district, an accessory building or structure shall not be constructed in front of, nor be a height greater than the principal building, nor shall they be within ten feet of side and rear property lines, uh, septic tanks and leach fields." And then there's a question as to, and then it says, "However, sheds not greater than a hundred square feet or less can be eight feet, um, or can be within six feet." And it refers to other things. So it's just a really poorly worded section, um, as to whether the entire thing relates, but I think we have consistently taken the position that when you have an accessory structure, if the predominant section that, that this is refers you to 21048, then the intent of the drafters, being the town board when they did that, was you should comply with the provisions of 21048 regardless of the fact that you're not in a residential district.
Okay. And then, so, the agenda lists three variances, but the denial letter only has two?
There were, there were, ended up being more than one denial letter, I thought.
Yeah, there was a revised denial letter. I'm sorry, it wasn't in your packet, but I did ask that, too. So there was, you can have it, actually, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the other question, just since we're on the subject, one of the variances, uh, the side yard, I said, it says three feet. Um, but I'm, I'm looking at your zoning, uh, table on the site plan, uh, which is in the upper-left corner on the screen there. And I noticed that the proposed side yard setback is two feet, ten inches, uh, as opposed to three feet. So I, I, if we are going to be indeed granting the variance for your side yard, I think we should make sure that it's sufficient to accommodate the two feet, ten inches, if that's, right, the funny thing is the site plan itself shows three feet.
Yeah, no, that, that's an error on the, uh, chart. I believe that was left over from, um, when the original lines of the, uh, garage were on the site plan. I think we measured those at two foot ten, uh, as existing. But now that we're reconstructing the entire building, we're setting it at three feet.
At three feet, okay, all right. So then, then the listing is correct. Just wanted to make sure while we're at it that we get it right.
Okay, I have any questions? Christine?
No, no questions.
All right.
I have a question, my typical one about coverage. And her reason, that entire property's gonna be covered with either a house or blacktop almost, right?
We're, we're sitting at around seventy-three percent coverage, and ninety-five percent is what's permissible in the zone. Um, it is, it is obviously more coverage than there was previously, but one of the, um, was not a requirement, but one of the comments and concerns of the fire district is having a stable, um, access road. So they do want the driveway paved. At that point, it just, it makes sense, and it's just easier to maintain a paved parking area as well. Because once you pave that access road, I mean, and you have the buildings on site, there's not really, uh, much value in not park, you know, paving those four parking spots. Especially when you're dealing with accessible buildings, so that's just a lot easier for them to, to move around on.
So ninety-five percent is the allowable?
In the ATC, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Wow. Simone?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
And no questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this? Do you, would you mind unsharing your screen?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, I don't see anyone on Zoom. Um, so then I'll move to close the public...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And then I'd also move for a ten-minute break. Is there any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Uh, then that motion carries. And we'll come back, um, we'll come back at, at 8:05?
8:05, okay.
All right, we're back in session. I'm gonna try and take these in the order of the people that are remaining. So, item two, 11 Shelley Road. This is an application for a fence in a front yard six feet tall or only three and a half feet are required, are allowed. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
Been there three years.
What's that? Been there three years?
Been there three years.
And it is a corner lot. I mean, if this were, under normal circumstances, it wouldn't be any problem at all. There doesn't seem to be any site problems with traffic. It's behind a line of trees. And it, you know, he had some concerns about safety of his children, his dog fenced in.
It's a nice wooden fence.
I'm sorry?
And it's a nice wooden fence.
Oh, yeah, it looks nice.
Substantial distance from the road, too. It's not like right up against it, so.
So, let's see. If nobody has any problems, I'll offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. It has existed for some time, is not to be inconsistent with the neighborhood, and I don't think it'll have any undesirable change. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance based upon the location of the house as a, as a corner lot. To achieve this, you would require an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically perhaps, but based, again, because this is a corner lot, it, the impact is kind of minimal. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. There's no evidence that will be any physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Take a break. Christine, do you mind doing this, this motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay? That brings us, I think the next one is item number four, which I've recused myself on. So Christine, do you don't mind making the findings on this?
Sure, okay. This is for William Kissner and Samantha Cipriano, 42 Kensington Lane, requesting a five-foot variance for the construction of an in-ground pool to be located 10 feet from the property line. Is there any discussion by the board, anything else? Okay, so I move as findings the following. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. This is consistent with other properties on the neighborhood, in the neighborhood. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Based on the topography of the property, there's a hill in the backyard, and so a variance would be necessary. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, not mathematically or with any impact on, on the neighborhood. Number four, whether the, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. There's no evidence of physical or environmental impact. And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. Yes, but it's not a reason to deny the request. And those are the findings. So move. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One recusal. Then you're gonna, yeah.
Yes. Well, Art, would you make the motion for that?
Sure.
And who votes? Is this Simona's voting?
Simona, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of visit, site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts these findings as set forth by the chair.
By the chair.
Co-chair, tonight.
Do you have to call the question? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay. So that number four passes.
And I think that brings us to item number eight. 35 Page Park. Is it an application? Is it an application for a side yard setback for three storage buildings requiring a 20-foot variance? Anybody have any concerns about this?
No. Phyllis is recused on this one?
Yes.
And so who's voting? Simona on all of the recusals, okay.
All right, there is a staff report recommending this. Anybody have any concerns?
It's all.
No. My hope is that the planning department will do something for screening along the real trail.
Yeah, yep. Nice.
And Simona, do you mind making this motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance as set forth in item number eight. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
No.
In the staff report. So move.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries with one recusal. And then that brings us to item? Six, sorry. 10 Amato Drive. This is for a shed relocated five feet from the side property line where 10 feet is required requiring a five-foot variance. Does anybody have any concerns about this one? Anybody concerned about the height?
The height, that's a killer.
It's, it's, it's really gonna tower over the fence.
Give up the cupola, whatever you want.
Give up the cupola, okay.
Gain you four feet, five feet probably.
Does it need the height requirement?
You're not being asked for a height variance, it's just a question of whether the height.
Just overpowering it.
Right. And so the, the question for the board about the cupola, is the cupola going to make it be overpowering? Or is the height of the building going to make it overpowering, or neither, or both?
I think both. I think the building by itself is, is overpowering where it's gonna be. Now, the real deal is, it's, I think it would be as overpowering 10 feet from the side lot line as it is from five feet from the sideline, side lot line. So does that make a difference to anybody?
We had nothing from any neighbors at all, right?
In the photos, it looks as if a lot of the space behind the house is empty. There's, there's something to the left, and then there's something to the right, but the bulk of it's empty.
Is there any reason why? He didn't want it in the, he didn't want it in the middle of the yard, but even over five feet more is not really the middle of the yard.
I say, no neighbors said anything good, bad, or different. Probably no mind.
Okay.
You raised this issue because of the height, which really.
Is that only, only because of the?
And the.
Right.
Well, like, zero.
Just because you can quite clearly see it. I mean, from, you know, there is a fence going around the yard, but you'd still see it. You know, if it was just a little bit of it over the fence, that might, you know, it wouldn't be such a big deal. But there's a lot of it, most of it's gonna be over the fence. But I don't know that, whether it's five feet from the side lot or 10 feet from the side lot line.
Right.
Makes it any less or more.
Yeah, it's 19 feet high to the peak, right?
To the peak and then another couple feet for the cupola.
For the cupola, yeah.
How high would it be if it was just one story, approximately?
Like, probably eight feet. Well, a little more, yeah, maybe two. Depending on the pitch, maybe, maybe twelve.
What he's stating, he's got no basement, no attic, so he needs a second.
All right, anybody have any problems?
No.
Okay. Then let me offer these. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the variance. There are other sheds in the neighborhood, and it's reasonably consistent with, with the neighborhood character. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. The shed could be moved, I think, closer to the middle or farther away from the side lot line, but I don't think that changes any of the, of the impact on the, on the neighborhood. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it's 50%, but in terms of the relative size of the building and the, the side lot line, it's, it's kind of de minimis. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that there's any physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings.
Second.
All right, and then, Phyllis, do you mind making this motion?
Not at all. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and a result of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the finding as set forth by the chair, so move.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, and Tina, who's Tina? Are you an applicant? Okay. Then we'll go back to item number nine, 241 North Road.
You could ask, Kelly is here on two applications.
What's that?
Kelly is here on two applications.
Right, so we did one, then we'll do the, you know, 'cause I forgot about, all right. All right, so this is an application for two signs. Remember that the county had some concerns about the second sign, so we need a super majority. There is a staff report. Basically recommending it. Let's see, is it? I move that the ZBA determine that this is an illicit action appropriate, appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any, was there a recusal on this one?
Yes.
Okay, one recusal, and Simona will be voting. Any, any against? Then that motion carries. Then I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of non-significance for this action.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
And with one recusal. And then Larry, do you mind making this motion? Oh, you're recused, okay, so Tony.
I move that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision was based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and a result of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the finding set forth by the chair and the staff report.
Just the staff report?
Just the staff report. Set forth by the staff report, so move.
Second.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, keeping in mind that there has to be a super majority, we'll do a voice, a vote, all those, Christine?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Nay? Aye. One recusal.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Your nay?
One nay and one recusal, so it passes.
Six, one, one.
And so we have to give some reasons for the count, to satisfy the count, the county.
It's a hospital.
It's a hospital?
I mean, seriously, you know, that's, that should take some kind of precedence over some of the other arguments.
And it's such a big property, it encompasses so much area, and it says hospital in it. I think that's really important, that it says hospital.
It's such a small percentage of that space.
Yes, I think the size of the signs versus the square footage or the size of the building.
The distance from the road for all the signs. Yeah.
Okay. Need anything more than that, Lisa?
Nope, thank you.
Good? All right, and then, is there anybody else? Uh, okay.
Young lady.
You got, yep. 736 Dutchess, right?
Sorry, that was me on doing Tina, but I was driving here.
All right. And that brings us to item number five. This is a request to extend some previously granted variance for an addition. I'm suggesting that there's not, nothing has changed, it still doesn't exceed, it doesn't encroach any farther on the side lot line than the existing property. And so I'm suggesting that we just accept the prior findings, which I don't recall whether that, it was probably not a staff report, it was probably something the chair said. And so, Tony, do you mind doing this one? Actually, Larry, do you mind doing this one?
Okay. This is fire, right? I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members.
And I think the prior findings, is that sufficient, Lisa? Okay. So say that.
In approving this variance, the board approves previous findings.
Yeah.
As set forth by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You too.
Okay, 44 La Grange.
Going to number 10 on the clock.
All right, this, this are reapprovals of, of prior approvals. There's a staff report. And we don't have to do any, any, yeah, because there's the planning board's meetings.
This was actually an uncoordinated review, so I prepared a neck deck based on the planning board's neck deck and just modified it for this purpose, just because we had one already. And that's what we did last time, so I just decided to do it again.
Then I move that the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
And I move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in determination of non-significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Then that motion carries. So, there's nothing to, except, with the exception of the walkways, right? Now, as imposing as this structure is, I, I think architecturally, the walkways add, kind of soften it and, and make it somewhat more appealing.
I agree.
And the fact, the height is, the height is what it is. The size, you know, somehow we granted all those things. And not withstanding the fact of what it looks like now. That's where we are, and I, I think the addition is gonna, is gonna improve the look of the project. Anybody have any concerns?
And also to, for the rear variance, your finding is that the increase in height doesn't change the board's opinion on the setback for the rear.
Did anyone, anybody have any concerns? Okay.
That's essentially what the staff report says, so you can use the staff report for your findings.
Christine, do you mind making this motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 10. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth in the staff report, and so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. I think that's everybody that's here, so, um... Item number seven?
Do you wanna go back to the beginning, 'cause?
Did we miss something?
Yeah, three.
Three, four.
Okay, yeah. Why in the driveway? All right, 35 Crestwood Boulevard, is, uh, he wants to double the size of his driveway. Because he's gonna have two more cars, two more drivers. The guy's got a one-car garage, and, I mean, either he's gonna be parking on the lawn, he's gonna be parking on the driveway.
There seems to be a lot of space to the right of the house, I don't think.
Anybody have any concerns? So let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. There are many similarly situated properties there that have extra wide driveways, two-car wide driveways, so it's consistent with the neighborhood. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible without an area variance. There's no way to accommodate this without an area variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's actually only, well, it's less than 50% increase, so, uh, no, I would say no. And whether it will have an adverse effect, there's no evidence that there's any physical or environmental impact on the neighborhood. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly is, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Art, do you mind doing the next one?
No.
Thank you.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts these findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. Next is item number seven. Christine, do you mind doing this, as I've recused myself?
Sure. Let's see. Okay, item number seven is Brian and Ella Plain, 130, 132 Van Wagner Road. Looking for a variance to construct a deck 13.73 feet where 20 is required. Is there any, any discussion about this one? All right, so I offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, this will improve the lot but have no other effect on the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, no, there's no other way due to the size of the lot. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's not substantial as, it's not, it's not encroaching, there's no greater encroachment into the side lot lines as, as the primary residence. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence of physical or environmental impact on the neighborhood. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision by the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance, yes, it was self-created, but not a reason to deny. And I offer those as the findings.
Second.
Simone, do you want to do the, thank you.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the co-chair, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals?
One recusal.
Okay. Passes, thank you.
All right, I think that brings us to item number eleven. Thirty-six Hasbrook Drive. This is a, uh, application for, um... A variance of fourteen and a half feet for an addition, which is just a, a dormer, um, which is not gonna encroach any further on the, on the side lot line. Anybody have any concerns about this one? And let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be made, produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, there's no big change going on with this, it's simply going up a portion with a dormer, and it's pretty consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, based upon the size of the lot and the position of the house, it would require an area variance to accomplish this. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically perhaps, but since there's no further encroachment into the side lot line, it's de minimis. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence of any physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny this application, and I would offer those findings. Okay, um, Phyllis, do you mind doing this one?
No, not at all.
Oh, thanks.
I move that the board approve the request for the area variance in item...
Eleven.
Eleven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by the board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number twelve, seventy-two Sunset Avenue. There's, there's an addition and a deck, uh, which requires a variance of ten feet. Does anybody have any concerns about this one? So, this one is actually no closer to the, it's in the same line as the house for the deck, and in fact, the addition is farther away from the side lot line than the main house. So let me offer these. Whether an undesirable change would produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, the deck is a replacement deck, and the addition is farther away from the side lot line and won't be visible from the street anyway. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible other than area variance, based upon, excuse me, the narrow lot size and the current zoning code, it's impossible to do anything without a variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, except that there's no greater encroachment on the side lot lines, and so it's really functionally de minimis. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, there is no evidence that there's any physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Larry, do you mind doing this one?
I move the board approve the requi, the request for an area variance set forth in item number twelve. This decision is based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number fourteen, nine La Grange. Any concerns about this one? And there are three applications, there's three variance requests, right?
Yep.
And, and we're, so we're including, we're relying on the accessory building code for that rear lot line.
Yes.
All right. Then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesir...
Wait, wait, secret.
Oh.
It's unlisted.
Oh, it's an unlisted action, okay. Then let me offer these. Whether the ZBA, I move that the ZBA determine that it's an unlisted action appropriate for unconditional review and declare itself to be lead agency.
Uncoordinated review.
Unconditional.
What did I say, uncoordinated? Put my glasses on. I move that the ZBA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be the lead agency. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. I also move that the ZBA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in determination non-significance for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And then, I offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will reduce in the character of the neighborhood or, or detriment to nearby properties. This property, I think, have a staff report. What's that?
I could save you some.
Oh, did you do a tape?
There's a staff report for this one.
Oh, okay, well then...
Save you a little.
That'll, that'll work. Tony S., or Tony, Tony C. Yeah.
So is this a special use, is that?
No, it's...
Just regulars?
Just regulars.
Okay. So I move the zoning board appro, I move the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number fourteen. Decision is based on review of application, testimony by the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and results of this site, uh, site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings of, set forth by the staff report.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Uh, then that motion carries. That brings us to the end of our agenda, however, there is a lead agency request from the planning board for a subdivision in De La Verge Avenue, forty De La Verge Avenue...
De La Verne.
De La Verne.
De La Verne, okay. Any, anybody have any objection to planning being lead agency? Then I move that the planning board be lead, lead agency on the De La Verne Avenue subdivision.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That does bring us to the end of our business, and therefore, I move to...
Did we say a lot, we thought ten o'clock, can we just start?
I did say that, didn't I? I move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Okay. All right, thanks for everyone's help tonight.